Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could rise, say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in all
Okay, thank you. Item 3.0, just comments from the chair. Just like to note that the board had the opportunity to do a workshop this afternoon on budget issues. It's hard to believe that it's only December, but we're kicking off the budget season for next year. But it was a very positive meeting, I think, very constructive. We have challenges ahead of us from a budgetary perspective, but we do every year. So, look forward to working with Patrick and the administrative team to put a good budget together for next year. Item 4.0, we've got minutes from the meeting of November 19th. Do I have a motion to...
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Bill, second by Megan. Any comments, corrections? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? No, thank you. 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I don't have any. Patrick?
No.
Okay. Item 6.0, public session. This is our first of two public sessions, and this would be an opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board on items that are on the agenda. Anybody want to address the board at this point? If not, okay, thank you. Moving quickly. Item 7.0, staff reports. Patrick?
So, our first presentation tonight is Sandra and Mary McCauley and some students, I believe as well, talking about the outdoor classroom. And this year, as the board knows, we were fortunate to receive a generous donation from the Pittsburgh Land Trust to make this happen, and it's an item that we'll talk more about as we go through the budget process this year regarding hopefully continuing this. So, we wanted to kind of give you an update on what we're doing, and Sandra, I'm going to pass it off to you. Okay.
Okay. We're going to move. I just ask, as people address the board, if they would use the mic, because that way it gets picked up in the transcription.
So, thank you, Patrick, for allowing us to do this. I just want to take a couple minutes tonight and talk about our outdoor classroom. We are very excited and grateful to the Pittsburgh Land Trust for supporting us on this project. I can, I'm not going to read word for word, but how it all began was a few years ago, six years ago, when I came to Pittsburgh, I noticed what great opportunities that our students had in working with the community and working in the area to allow them to have a lot of experiential science learning that took place outside. And at that time, we had a class that was very busy and hands-on learners, and we had some parents approach me and ask what we could do to give kids a different kind of experience, that they would still be learning, but they would also be outside and taking advantage of what we had. We have a very active parent, and other community members are involved in our school, and they were very eager and excited to help with that. And we put together a small committee of members of the Pittsburgh Land Trust, Ellen Winchester, Lynn Kay, who's unfortunately, or fortunately for her, in Hawaii, Dot Kelly. We wrote, tried to write a couple of grants, but unfortunately, we, I think we wrote three grants, and we did not get our grants. But we continued to move forward. We did an outdoor classroom cleanup. We had some volunteers come in, and, excuse me, Mary put up a chalkboard out there during all of this, again, through connections that we made through Bates College, and Mary's going to speak about her learning with Project Learning Tree. We just continued to get a lot of energy, and we were very excited to be able to grow our program. So, with the grant, we wanted to be able to prove that we were actually making a difference, that we were good stewards of our generous donors' money, and that our students still were continuing to learn. So, we set some goals. An important part of this is bringing more members of the community in, bringing citizen scientists to us, and drawing the connection for our students to know that we live in an area that is very rich in natural resources, and we need to protect those resources, and they're the stewards that will move that forward. We want kids to stay in Pittsburgh. We want kids to raise their families in Pittsburgh, because that's what's going to keep all of us going. So, we've talked about the benefits, the social-emotional learning, and again, the connection to the science learning, the STEM initiatives. A few years ago, the fourth and fifth grade teachers, Sandy Brand and Amber Snell and I, had the very good fortune to attend a main math and science workshop on STEM learning, and brought the consultant back with us, Joyce Tugow, back into the district, who now works with all of our K-5 teachers. So, everything that we do, we try to focus, how is this science connected to our language arts? How is our math connected to our science? How are we doing all of this together? And the point of adding an extra day a week for Mary is that we all know that teachers have a lot on their plate already. Mary acts as the coordinator or the conduit between all of those things. She brings in volunteers for us. She works on units with teachers, and I'll let her speak to those things, but it's a very important position, and she's also had a change in her position where she works one day a week in Woolwich, and so she's making connections with Woolwich teachers. We have Dyke Newell teachers who are also involved, interested in coming to our classrooms, so it's really just in its infancy, but it's very exciting for all of us. This is our pre-K doing their garlic planting. So, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Sandra touched on a couple things, but I just, before I get into exactly what we do with the classroom, or what I've been doing in the classroom, I just wanted to give you a little brief lead-up into why I'm so excited about this. I love the outdoors, and I, because of that, I became a main guide, and I just love taking people out in the nature. You can learn much better, I found, through experience, behaviors are much better with kids when you take them outside. It's just a whole different environment. Love to try and continue with the outing clubs. I've tried some in the past, so we try and incorporate now into phys ed classes, but just love teaching people outside, taking them out. A few years back, probably, at least six, I've read a book by Richard Louv, you've probably heard about it, entitled Nature Deficit Disorder. That just got me thinking so much about getting the kids outside and how much more it aids in their learning. So, it's just a simple concept, learn and play outside, but that's very difficult in these days now. Kids just want to stay in. But if I can do it in school, then it helps a lot, and it fosters an appreciation for the environment and respect for the environment. I also started to do, research a little more. A lot of you might have heard of Forest Fridays. It's all around the country now, and so I went down to Freeport, their pre-K program does a Forest Friday program. Every Friday, every pre-K student goes out, and they spend the entire day outside. And I went down, observed all this, took notes, and we kind of duplicated some of the things that they had, just simple blackboards, benches to sit on, just little things that you could use. And so, I like to get the kids out there and spend as much time as we can, not just for phys ed, but for all different subject matters. Then, after that, I was even more excited. I learned about Project Learning Tree, and had, and this is actually a group that's been around since the 70s. They're actually one of the premier environmental education programs in the world, and we're fortunate in Maine to have access to this through the Main Tree Society for, Main Tree, yeah, I think that's how, they put on teacher tours. And so, myself and a couple other teachers from Woolwich went, two summers ago, learned a ton, and it was, I thought, oh, I'm going to go and learn more about trees, so I can help kids identify that. It was way beyond that. It was dealing with all different types of curriculums and how beneficial it is to teach those outside, using the trees and the forest as, as they call it, windows into the environment. So, that got me even more excited. So, with this, continued with our plan for the outdoor classroom, and it just catapulted. What I had noticed is improved focus in kids when we take them out. It engages the students more, and it decreases their behaviors. And I've witnessed this with several different classes where I've had students that I might have trouble with, behavior problems, in, just say gym class, and taking them outside, they were a totally different person, and they were able to be exposed to just nature around them, and I don't, you know, I want to say it, it helps with their stress levels and helps them focus more, and we've all heard a lot of that too, but it is, it was just unbelievable. Now, Sandra mentioned what I do, my role. I've been supporting the teachers, helping them with the curriculum, keeping it, you know, very science-based with the STEM, but also interdisciplinary activities, and one, I'm going to go through that list real quick, but one of them... Fourth grade wigwam, we just are building now out in the woods. Up here, we have just a list of what we've done through the whole outdoor classroom cleanup. We had several volunteers coming in, we had a lot more ideas to do, but we got it all cleaned up, and as Sandra pointed out, we had a pre-K, we had citizen scientists, we called them, global volunteers, Andy Adams came in, taught them all about the antipode and the process of plant itself, and then these kids actually, they learned, so I hope they, you know, maybe see the fruits of their labor pretty soon. Kindergarten, they had, they had utilized the classroom pond, and they've gone out and done labeling of leaves, and it really is a process of scientific writing, and so they've had many observations of what leaves they've labeled, and that first grade, they plant parts, third grade, which Willow will speak a little bit about, they're, at that grade level, we do the tree identification, and that's where the whole really started, here in Pittsburgh Land Trust, starting the, just with simple trees, labeling the trees. And then the fourth grade, we did this, we did this, we did this one about Native Americans, and they can talk a little bit about that, but they went up to the Dammer Scott River Association, and they were fascinated by the conical wigwams, which is called teepee, and they built one, they put some conical ones, so we did cleanup, we found a space right next to the water, that was one of the requirements, and we started to, we helped to frame, start to, there's a bunch of pictures, and you get a chance before you leave out the hallway, you walk through doors, you have many pictures from all that are activities that we've been doing. So, it's interdisciplinary. Fifth grade, they helped with the stewardship of the trails, and they stayed in the picnic games that they, they're going to be grown up in this grade. Some, another upcoming event will be at a local residence, that will be, those acres here, that's going to teach our students now, as an ANA back there, we might serve the cafeteria, breakfast for the ones one day, and then also, as Sandra pointed out, Woolwich is very interesting, you know, the classroom is where I've been learning with them, trying to make that, and that's really, I think that's it now, for what we've been doing with the classroom, and hopefully, too.
Thank you, Mary. And one thing that's been really impressive, too, is we did a lot of back work on this, but the way that the teachers, the classroom teachers, have embraced having Mary in their classroom and having Mary work with them, and have her create those lessons and the collaboration that they've done together. So, now, we'll start with Nathan Tras. Nathan is in the fourth grade. He's going to talk about his wigwam.
So, we have been taught, we've been learning about Native Americans, so we wanted to build our own wigwam in our outdoor classroom. So, we decided to build a wigwam. So, we marked some trees, and then we, then we went, the day before, then the next day, we went out, we cut the trees down, and then we put them in a stack, and then a couple weeks later, we went out, we built the wigwam frame, then we took, we had some sticks in the river that they, so you put them in the river, so they bend, they bend, so we bent them and put them around the teepee, so you could put, so you could put the buffalo, they use buffalo skin for teepees, so we're going to use a canvas and a spring to put it on there, and I really, really cannot wait until we do the canvas. So, we went to Dammer Scott River Association, and we learned about how they lived, what they had to do to make their house, and what they would eat, because there's like these little plants in the ground that you would dig up, and there would be a little nut at the end, all you had to do was wash it off, and then you could eat it. It's very, very interesting.
And this is Willow. She's also in the fourth grade, but she's going to talk about her third grade experience, and I'm going to take your books and pass them around, okay?
Okay, so, in third grade, we studied the forest, and we adopted our own tree, and Ms. Lynn Kay, who's in Hawaii, she took us out, and we went into the forest, and we chose a tree that we really, really liked, and we would label it, and every so often, we would go out into the outdoor classroom and check on it and learn more and more about it. And so, we did observations and scientific writings every time we got back, and that helped us learn a lot more about the photosynthesis, chlorophyll, and dormant, and we even had, I think, I don't remember his name, but he came, and we learned about the trees with Ms. Harkins.
Yes.
Dr. Doran, and he taught us some really cool things, and he, he showed us what some of his tools do, and one of them was where you would drill a hole into the tree to see if it was hollow, and when you took it out, if there's a clean sample, then it would be a good, nice tree, but if there, if there was like, it was like smushed everywhere, it wouldn't really be, it'd be a bit, what's the word? I don't remember, like, yeah. And then, so it helps the learning, because when you go outdoors, there's so much more to do and think about, and because when you're inside, like, you're kind of cooped up inside a room, but when you're outside, you're just out into the world, and you can think about a lot of things, and you, you think about, like, sometimes nature, because there's a lot of nature around you.
Do you have any questions for us? Yes. I would say at least once a week, somebody is going out, and the great thing about this is, because it's new, we've had some flexibility, and there have been teachable moments, when teachers have just sought out Mary, and then that afternoon, they're outside in the classroom. The biggest, I think the biggest impression that it's made on me is that there are kids that learn in lots of different ways, and we had a fourth grader come in, and after they did the wigwam project, they did some writing, and this student didn't like to write at all, and he sat down and wrote a page and looked at his teacher and said, "I'm a writer." So, I mean, it proves that, you know, you can say it as much as you want to kids, that these things are all connected, but until you have the opportunity to go outside and make that connection for yourself, whether you're six or 16, it really is a great thing to see, and the teachers, again, are very excited. Again, thank you mostly to Pittsburgh Land Trust.
Sorry. I have a question, I'm sorry. I have a question for Nathan and for Willow. Nathan, did you, when you went to the Dammer Scott River Association to learn about Native Americans, did they talk about which kind of Native Americans most used the teepees and the wigwams?
They usually used the, I don't think they did. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the Wabanaki that usually used the teepees, because we were, they were in the warmer weather.
Interesting. And did you ever stop and think of how many Native American names we have around us, and the names of places? Because if you, if you tell people a place in Maine, and they're not from Maine, sometimes it's very hard to pronounce some of them, because there are a lot of Native American names we have places, don't we?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And Willow, I was just wondering, what was your, what kind of tree was your favorite tree? Do you know, I found a pine tree in my backwoods with a round wagon, old wire metal wagon wheel around it that had fallen down, and the tree had grown up, up through it, and the tree had grown almost as big as this wire circle around it, and it was interesting to think about how long that wire, piece of wire had been sitting there on the ground underneath the tree. You're lucky, it's a good tree to like, because we have a lot of them here, don't we? Thank you.
The most important thing is, I think, would be the learning of the Wabanaki, because that's our past history, that's a history, and we get to learn about the history of our ancestors. I think it's all about having fun and doing, doing something, doing things that you like out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. You guys, you guys can feel free to leave if you'd like, but thank you for coming out. And parents, thank you for bringing your children here tonight, they did a great job. So, next up, we have Devin Galis is here, but I'd also like to thank Katie Joseph, who helped put this together, and I think Anita and Jen may weigh in as well, they had a meeting. So, this is one of our goals, is to learn more about ACES and the RTI process. So, Devin is our in-house expert, so she's going to do a presentation and then open it up for discussion.
Thank you guys very much for having me here. As those of you who know me, this is something that's very interesting to me, it's something I feel really passionate about, and I'm excited that this is something that the board is really interested in, in learning more about. Can I just have a raise of hands if you've ever heard of ACES before? Good to know. So, this is going to be kind of like an introduction to ACES, and then if you want to speak, if you want me to speak more about it at a different time, I can. This is just kind of an overview. I'll go through it quickly, and then I'll be open to any questions. So, ACES stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences. And what it is, is it's things that happen to kids when they're young, so traumatic experiences that have a profound impact or really make a difference on that developing child, and have an impact on not only brain development, but on the bodies of children, how they, how they come to be adults. And this whole term ACES, which is kind of used a lot by public health and mental health professionals, came from a study that was done between 1995 and 1997 by Kaiser Permanente, and what it looked at is, we know that abuse is not good, but why? How do we know that for sure? And how does abuse and traumatic experiences for kids when they're young really impact how grownups experience life? So, what they did is they took a huge, huge study of over 17,000 members in California, and they looked at data when they had their physical exams, they had them answer questions about their, their past, and they had them answer questions about whether or not they had experienced any of these different 10 traumatic experiences. And once they had that information, they followed this huge, huge group of people and looked at the likelihood of them having things such as, you know, substance abuse issues, heart disease, whether or not they smoked cigarettes, all these big public health concerns, and they looked at that connection between those traumatic, traumatic experiences that they had when they were little, and how that made a difference on what kind of adult they ended up being. So, they looked at it as a longitudinal study and really saw what's that connection between that early trauma and those later on life experiences. And so, when they looked at these adverse experiences or these traumas, they, they looked at 10 different things that could be broken down into three different categories: abuse, household challenges, and neglect. And I just kind of went, went a little bit closer with them. Under the abuse category, you can go to the next one, under the abuse, they asked people whether they'd experienced emotional abuse, physical abuse, or sexual abuse. And they asked these questions pretty outright. They asked people, have you ever had, you know, have you had someone living in your home swear at you, insult you, put you down? They use these words directly, and they ask the questions that a lot of times people don't ask. The next category of trauma that they wanted to know was kind of overall household challenges, was, you know, was your mother abused? Was there substance abuse in your household? Was there mental illness in your household? Was there a separation or divorce? Or was someone in your family, did someone in your family go to prison? And the last category of these, these traumatic experiences for kids was this idea of a neglect. Was there emotional neglect, or was there physical neglect? So, they asked all these people whether or not they had any of these 10 categories, and that came up with their ACE score. So, sometimes people will say, what's your ACE score? And it's this zero from 10 score based on how many of those following 10 traumatic experiences you as a human has, have experienced. And so, it looked at, you know, whether any of these things happened to you when you, between the birth, between the ages of birth and 18, and they found some pretty surprising results. First of all, they found out that it's common. It's not just one category of people, it's not just inner-city people, minority populations that are having a lot of traumas, everybody, that a lot of people have experienced these traumas. It said that almost two-thirds of them had at least one ACE, and more than one in five had three or more ACES. And one of the big things that they highlighted in this big study is that a lot of the people, I mean, it wasn't just, like I said, it wasn't this one population, there was a huge amount of people who had graduated from college, there were people of all different socioeconomic statuses, and... And trauma was kind of this universal thing that a lot of people were experiencing. And so, what they found, and again, this is the big kind of like, oh, my goodness. We thought it was bad, but this is really, it is bad. They found that as your number of ACES increased, so the more traumatic experience you had as a child, the more likely, or it would increase your risk for the following, for alcoholism and alcohol abuse, depression. I mean, so many different public health problems were, had this correlation between early childhood experiences. So, there's a whole list here. And this is just another drama, I mean, another, a picture just to look at it again. So, again, it's saying that the more ACES you've experienced, the more trauma you've experienced as a young child, the more likely you are to have one of these other, these different health outcomes. So, obesity, diabetes, depression, all these different things increase with the more ACES that you've experienced as a child. So, this is just a little clip. So, there's... So, there's this movie that is called Resilience and it talks all about, it really looks like an ACES study. It looks at how before this study came out, people didn't realize why this trauma impacted you. So, this is a little trailer, but I think it also gives a little overview of this issue that we're talking about.
They know all the differences.
So, again, I recommend this movie. I think it's going to learn more about this. It's that, um, it's a really, really great movie. Make those community actions, did a presentation earlier, Black Mall, had a panel about it. So, again, this is just looking at how does it impact us? Just another graphic to say, you know, we have these childhood experiences. What it's actually doing is it's impacting the way our brain is developing. Our body is on stress, is on alert all the time. Stress, it's stressed out. We're not able to focus on the learning, but we're always kind of on alert, this whole fight or flight. Our body is constantly in that state. So, it's affecting our neurodevelopment. It's impacting our social, emotional, and cognitive impairment, which then leads us to use more high-risk behaviors. And then it leads to all these different problems that we're talking about, whether it's disease on your body or more social problems, which is then leading to early death. In some situations, not all. So, how does it work? Why do these experience, why do the things that we experience as a child, why does it make, lead to all these different impacts? And a lot of it is this idea of toxic stress. And Harvard University has a Center on the Developing Child and they talk a lot about this and why does this trauma impact our body and our brains in this way? And it's this whole idea of toxic stress that, you know, we have positive stress and then we have stress and then we have toxic stress. So, if we have positive stress, it's a situation, we can kind of get over it. We have, the next level of stress, can be hard sometimes, but we're able to get over it. Toxic stress is this constant state of arousal. So, it's our body is, you know, we're always on alert and we think we're always in danger. And then our bodies are just getting worn down and our brains are making different connections. So, it's this whole idea of always being on alert for so long and how it then impacts us. So, again, this toxic stress, so the more trauma we have as kids, it's impacting our brain development, our immune system, our regulatory systems, our cardiovascular systems. And they did a really good example. It's like a car is constantly being revved up, never has time to sit and how that would be like for your body. You're constantly hyper-aware, hyper-vigilant and you're never kind of giving your body that time to calm down and it makes really lasting impacts on our bodies. And so, why does that matter to us? So, we have so many kids in our communities that are experiencing some of these adverse childhood experiences and it impacts our ability to remember, our ability to think, our executive functioning, our ability to kind of decide which order to try things and how to keep ourselves organized, attention and behavior, our ability to kind of understand what's going around us, to read social cues, to understand and learn from our peers. And all of these different things are being impacted by this amount of trauma that kids are experiencing in their young ages. But, this is a little bit doom and gloom, but it's not our destiny and I think that's the big important thing is that anyone who's talking about ACES and all the different, you know, people who are trying to get this information out there is to tell us this does not mean that if you have a traumatic experience as a child, then just give up on life, that it's done. So, they're not destiny. It's, this can happen to us, but there are ways to kind of mitigate some of these early childhood experiences and give kids more success. And so, the big thing is to teach about ACES, to learn about ACES, to know about ACES, and then find ways to support kids. And so, just three different ways to mitigate that trauma is those healthy and responsive relationships. So, it's all about the power of having that strong adult, teaching some of those skills like executive function and self-regulation, and then find ways to help families meet those basic needs and try to take some of that stress away from families and support kids and families in the process. And then there's just more information about trauma-informed schools and we don't have to get more into that, but there are ways that we can look at what we're doing in schools and make sure that we're seeing it from a kind of a trauma. And then I just put a lot more resources. I know it's a goal for the board and so I didn't know if you wanted to read more. I love to read about trauma, so there's a lot of resources there. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. So, is this something that is, what are we already doing? Is this something we utilize to identify within our system now?
Yeah, so I think that different places in Maine, as the state of Maine, we're doing different things. Different doctor's offices are kind of looking at, should we be taking, should we be asking this kind of information? Should we be getting ACES scores? So, that's something kind of that's happening in Maine. And different schools are doing different things. I went to a wonderful workshop and, you know, Waterville High School, for example, has decided to have an ACES committee and they're really looking at ACES and informing, teaching and teaching staff about ACES. What I think we're doing great for RSC-1 is I think a lot of the things that we do is trauma-informed practice. So, one of the big things is you don't always know kids' ACES scores. So, what you should really do is you should provide good quality services to everybody as if everybody has a high-quality ACES score. So, one of the things I think that at RSC-1 in particular, we do really well is this whole idea of building relationships. Because that's a big thing. So, the different programs we have, you know, whether it's from the outdoor classroom, we're making connections with community partnerships, or whether it's all the different resources we provide for families from the schools, like the backpack programs or, you know, different programs we have at Morse, the food pantry. So, we're doing a lot of that stuff. And I think that we're doing a lot, especially through behavioral RTI, in providing training for teachers about the brain and about trauma and what that looks like. I mean, a big thing that happens with young kids in particular is that acting-out behavior is often kind of just the body's response to being traumatized.
Right.
So, understanding that it's not willfully being bad, but it's a body that's on high alert at all times and that that's what it looks like. And understanding that and recognizing what early mental health challenges look like and providing resources and support for that. I think as a district, we're doing a lot. And I think the more we learn about it, the more we can say, "Oh, that's why we do that." But, you know, there's always more that we can do. It's a tough, it's a tough thing. We've got a lot of, I mean, like I said, it's not just inner-city. It's in Maine, it's in Massachusetts. But, we've got some trauma in our community for sure. We've also got some wonderful things happening.
And Lou, I think that, excuse me, but I think that part of ACES is also resiliency and that was that little clip. And I think addressing them together, always think of not just the identification of the ACES, but also the equally important thing of teaching about the great capacity of resiliency. To teach the children that, to identify what their resiliencies are. But, there's resiliency process too and that's, you know, to do with the family and the child. And I think teaching that other component is a part of helping children understand their own bodies and also teaching our staff the part of resiliency side of ACES helps them give children better tools. Is that...
Yeah, no, definitely. Because, I mean, we don't learn about this to say, "Oh, well, that's why we have all these problems. Let's stop there." But to recognize, kind of understanding why, so then we can build that resiliency. Because it's happening and we're seeing it and there are ways that we can be doing, do things to help build that in kids.
But do we improve resiliency and improve our interventions if we do screening?
I would say probably more important than screening would be education around trauma in general. Because what we want to do is we want to understand what behavior looks like, right? And whether or not you have five and you have one of an ACE score. I want to know what best practice looks like for both of you and recognizing, well, if you have these kind of behaviors, how do I respond to that? So, I mean, sometimes we don't need to know if we know what good practice looks like. Does that make sense? I mean, we know we have trauma, so I don't know if it matters how many ACES you have.
But we also know we're being asked, as a district, asked continuously to provide more behavioral support in schools. So, and that's fine. We can address, we can respond that way by providing more resources. I guess the question is...
Are there more resources that we could have if we were able to identify?
Or do we get more efficient if we know what the scope, I mean, this longitudinal study provides a sense of what the scope is? But, you know, you treat all behavioral issues the same way or is your, are your interventions improved if you have a better sense of what the issue is?
I think that knowledge about where families are and best being able to wrap around and support families is always helpful. I don't know how, what that would look like specifically, but I mean, I think information is always helpful. Thing is, I don't know if we're always going to know that. No...
Yeah, I mean, what you're suggesting or what the studies sort of suggest is you treat, you treat the population as if, you know the problem's there, you don't know the scope of the problem, so you treat the entire population. And I guess my question is, you...
Would it be more helpful to identify what that specifically looks like? Yeah.
Well, I think there might be some value in initial screening process and then follow-up data later so you can track, are your interventions appropriate? Are they paying off?
Are they successful, yeah?
Are they successful, you know, and which ones are more successful than others?
And to some degree, not specific information, but the Maine Integrated Youth Survey does provide that information. We're, you know, we're working right now with our school nurse to set that up for February to start taking more data. And that's where a lot of, we get, you know, not knowing you versus you, but in general, what is our school dealing with in terms of trauma and substance use? And we get a lot of great information from that. But I see what you're saying about would we change our intervention if we knew specifically what we were trying to support and what that looked like?
When you talk about trauma-informed practices in the classroom, can you give us some examples of what that looks like?
Yeah, it's, a lot of it, a big thing that they talk about, because there's, you know, there's a lot of research on what that is. A lot of it is understanding behavior from a trauma lens and kind of understanding what that behavior looks like. So, that's one thing. It's a lot about building relationships and trying to take away barriers that kind of separates school from community. You know, how do we make it kind of more inclusive? How do we get families involved? It also includes finding ways to help, even though we're a school, help work with families getting their basic needs met. So, those are kind of the big things. And also a lot to do, and I know we're working on this as a district, is really looking at that social, emotional learning piece. And how do we start from kindergarten and really teach kids to recognize and talk about their feelings, recognize what they feel like in their body, and then have the language to talk about it and to regulate their emotions a little bit. Mindfulness is a big part of trauma-informed schools. How do we get kids to practice mindfulness, which is a lot of stuff I know that we are doing in our elementary schools? So, those different pieces. And I think that, you know, that whole, that kind of, I like the way that Harvard breaks it down until like learning those four competencies, so learning that self-regulation, social, emotional learning piece, then all about the relationship building. How do we have opportunities for people to be connected to other people? You know, through mentorships or through relationships with teachers and students. And then that other thing is really helping families kind of break down some of those barriers to get those basic needs met.
Thanks, Devin.
Any other questions? Nope.
Thank you. It's certainly a very sobering presentation. Thank you for putting it... If you could get that machine out of my house. Where's, well, there. Do you need it again?
Unplug. There you go.
Thanks, Devin. Okay, item 8.0, committee reports. Patrick?
Yeah, we finally received the final funding and design approval for the new high school and BRCTC. So, that is done. We do not have to go before any more state board meetings and presentations. So, we are done with that. Next thing we will do is in January, as soon as we get back from break, we will advertise for a general contractor. And there are four companies that have put their qualifications in. So, we have, it'll be one of those four, you know, organizations that we'll work with. We also will go out for the clerk of the works in January as well. So, I think by the third week in January, we'll close on the clerk of the works. And I think February 21st will be the date that we close for the general contractor. So, again, we plan on building, starting to build hopefully in March, April and, you know, and going full blast from that moment forward. So, I don't know if you have any questions on that?
Any questions for Patrick on that? I just, since we've been talking about an outdoor classroom, I just, you know, a question. We're removing tons of material from this site and exposing ledge. Have we ever, I mean, do we have anyone who teaches a geology component on staff who might take a class up there? Do you think it would be interesting? I mean, it might be interesting. It might not be interesting. I don't know. Might be dangerous. I don't know. Just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, it's something where it's possible. I just know that, you know, croaker and safety and everything else would not want that if somebody wants to go there on a Sunday when nothing's happening. But, yeah, it's tough. I mean, but as far as an outdoor classroom, we have had some conversations. We have the mill pond there. You know, we're going to have walking trails around the high school. Um, you know, we're going to have walking trails around the high school. So I think there's going to be opportunities for us at the high school as well. One thing I did forget to mention that will come before, will probably come before the board, but also will come before the building committee, and some of you serve on the building committee, is you heard from Dave Richards earlier this evening that natural gas will come to BMS for free. Um, but we've also talked, and the natural gas may come to the new high school, um, but it would be at a cost. And so they're in the process of talking to other businesses in Bath that that pipeline would go through to find out if there's an interest. And the building committee and the board would have to weigh whether our investment to have natural gas come to the new high school is, you know, is worth the investment over time. Where, where is that payback? And so we are still going to do geothermal at the new high school. So the natural gas would primarily be for our science labs, for our kitchen, and some other things. Um, but we still, believe it or not, we still would be the biggest user, uh, according to Maine Natural Gas, uh, of the different organizations that is passing by. So just to kind of let you know that, that will be coming. There's a conversation.
Hey, thanks. Thanks, Patrick. Um, curriculum, item eight point two?
Of course, I know after Devon, so I can't read it. Um, so I'm Julie Kenny. I'm just coming, I, I spoke to you, whoever was in our, um, meeting earlier about Melmac and our recent grant that we received. And we found out last July. And so I was going to give you a few updates about how we're implementing this and what initiatives it's brought to our school. So, um, the Melmac Education Foundation has typically worked with, uh, traditional high schools, and they changed and made a CTE Pathways Initiative Grant. And it consists of two different awards. And the reasoning behind this was, uh, really because there's been such a focus on sending students to four-year colleges recently, that we've really lost touch with a lot of, um, trade schools and other opportunities for students that are very enriching and also very important to our community and our livelihood, because we need tradespeople and we need trained workers. And there's a lot of opportunity out there for students that they're not aware of because they haven't been educated about it. So, um, part of it is really helping us get the right students and the right programs, so we can send students to competitive colleges. And to, so students know that you can take a architecture class and go to a four-year or a five-year school to get a certified architect license and stuff like that. So, um, BRCTC received both of these awards, so it's a total of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars over the next four years. Um, the primary initiatives of the grant from Melmac Education Foundation are, um, to increase positive outcomes for students who attend CTE schools, including, um, and especially earning credentials of value and as a, as a, as a direct result of them attending a CTE center. And then the second was really twofold, and it's the best thing that's probably happened to CTE in a while, is to expand, um, CTE experiences for kind of our non-traditional students. This could be either at the middle school or earlier high school levels, and to students that can't fit their, um, CTE program in their everyday schedule because of other barriers, because as we've increased graduation requirements is, and things like that, we've, we've seen a decrease in students at CTE. So the CTE Pathways Initiative is the Boosting College and Career Readiness Grant and a Systems Innovation Grant. So I'll go through both of them really quick and tell you how we're utilizing them in our school. So the Boosting Career and College Readiness Grants, uh, follows the same set of requirements that the Best Practices Grant at the traditional high schools follows. But it focuses on providing opportunity for CTE students, success after high school for careers and colleges. And, um, that one, what we're doing for that grant, we have transportation for, and lunch included, for fall college trips. But they're specific to programs, so we're not taking all students to the same college. Every one of our programs this fall visited a school that has their trade. So if they want to do, um, automotive, they get to go see an automotive program. They don't do the whole college campus tour. They just do a whole day in that program, so they see what life is like as a college, uh, student in that program. Um, and then we're going to do the same thing for businesses. And one of the things that I've learned a lot by working with my CTE folks is about transferable skills. And that what you learn in carpentry, you might want to go work for a yacht building company and build interiors of boats. And we want students to see those transferable skills so they can see how they put them to use. So we're going to do spring business trips and open them up to all of our students. So it might be engineering students, and it might be carpentry students and automotive students, all going together to see some manufacturing companies and see what the different opportunities are for careers in those areas later. So we're really excited. We're going to start planning those. Um, we've recently started our first middle school mentorship program where we're working with just BMS this year. We've identified, um, ten, twelfth gr- eleven twelfth graders in our various programs, and they have, they're matched with eighth graders. And the eighth graders are coming up one day a month for the remainder of the school year to work with their twelfth grade mentor for the entire afternoon period and learn, uh, some valuable career skills and what it might be like to pursue that path later. And they were identified with the guidance counselors, um, and Brandon Ward at the middle school. So we've, we had our first one, uh, right, right after Thanksgiving, I think, and it was a great experience. So we're looking forward to having them again, and we're hoping to be able to open it up to Woolwich next year and hopefully increase our twelfth grade and maybe have our eleventh graders be mentors also. We're really trying to create a co- a career and college, um, minded culture in our schools. So that includes going out to businesses and colleges and purchasing kind of memorabilia to post on our walls and make sure our students are aware of opportunities and, and what's around us in our community and really across the whole state of Maine. We're hosting, we're planning to host a FASFA night for next year. This year, we didn't have a FASFA night in our district. We sent students to region ten. And so we're going to host a FASFA workshop for all of our sending schools. So all of Morse, Booth Bay, Wisconsin, and Lincoln Academy will be invited to attend ours, which will be exciting. And this sounds crazy, but we're offering incentives this year to students. And this is another thing where this extra money from Melmac is really helpful, because you'd be surprised what kids will do for a ten-dollar Amazon gift card. We have, we're really helping our sending school guidance counselors and working with them and helping kids get their, uh, FASFA forms filled out. Because a lot of students realize too late that they might want to go on to a two-year or four-year college, and their parents haven't filled out a FASFA yet. So they'll do it for a ten-dollar Amazon gift card. And they'll probably, they'll fill out, so if they fill out a job application and, and they show us a completed application, or if they show us a completed FASFA, they get a ten-dollar gift card. And it's really worked. And kids will do things when they get a reward. So we're allowed to do stuff like that with Melmac money. So that's our Boosting Career and College Readiness Grant. Uh, and that's just a few of our things. We're hoping to, next year, we put in money for the grant this year, but it got crazy. We're hoping next year to have an open house for our PTA and work with our PTA to get little kids in our building at night for some sort of experience. Because we really want the community to understand what happens in our building and not what they think happens in our building. So I think being in there is a, a really big difference. So our second grant is the Systems Innovation Grant, and we're one of only seven schools in the state to receive it. And it's nineteen thousand dollars a year for four years. And we will have, in the summer of two thousand twenty, our first summer CTE STEAM program. And it's going to be for incoming ninth and tenth graders. And students who complete the two-week, um, program will receive a half-credit elective at Morse High School. And I'm hoping, we're going to talk to the superintendents, but I'm hoping to open it up to our sending schools and see if they can, uh, provide transportation, because we'll have enough, we'll have fifty openings. And so the students will come for a full day for two weeks directly at rate until July, from when school ends till the first of July. And they will do a morning program and an afternoon program, and we're hoping to have five programs. So the students will each complete two out of five programs, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and have a STEAM immersion, think like, um, project-minded and blend in science and math and technology into their programs. So we've hired a coordinator. We're hoping, we're, we're in the middle of planning and hiring. We're, our stu- our teachers are, most of them are on board with wanting to come do that within the summer. And so we're looking forward to that and hoping kids sign up for it.
That'll be when?
We're, well, we think, if snow days go as planned.
No, I mean, this summer or the next summer?
This is this summer.
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty.
You said twenty twenty, so.
Oh, sorry, twenty nineteen. Yes, sorry.
Okay, twenty nineteen.
I'm ahead of myself. Yeah, twenty nineteen.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it'll be this summer, and it's for incoming ninth and tenth graders. And we, the great thing about Melmac is if we find this year that maybe we're at the wrong target audience and we need to think about younger kids, we can just change it for the next year. But I'm really hoping that students who can't fit it in their schedule can find time in their summer to really gr- get a career and, um, kind of trades experience that's fun, that can help build and work hands-on in our area, because some of our students can't access it during the school day.
Is that, is it only for CTE students or?
It's for any students right now. It, where it's open to Morse first, but then we're going to open up, so it's any Morse, incoming ninth or tenth grader.
Any, any more students.
So we're hoping to, really to expose CTE to more students that don't take it right now.
Right, yeah.
No, that's exciting.
That's very.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Julie?
Your enthusiasm is infectious.
Oh, good, I try.
That's awesome.
I just, I, I, you know, I'm not sure you've, you've talked about this in a, in an open meeting. I know you have in the building meetings. But, you know, bringing CTE and Morse closer together and designing space in a way that would promote this crossover between CTE and, and.
Yeah, I think.
Traditional students, do you think, you think that will, how do you think that might address your numbers issue?
I think there's incredible opportunity, and there's, and everybody right now is open to it, and that's the gr- that's the best part. And I think with some scheduling, we look at the schedule and, and we're going to work on that together and see how we can best reach the needs of all of our students. Because as most of us know, a lot of our students could benefit from some sort of, even if it's elective and not the full CTE programming, it would, it's beneficial to everybody. And it's, I, I have a hard time believing that students will walk by our programs and see what's going on and not be intrigued to sign up. Where right now, you don't walk through our building.
Right.
So the students at Morse have no, they, they're not over on our side, so they're not seeing what's happening. So I, I think when, when it's out there, it, it'll be more exciting and more open to students to see what's going on.
Great. Katie?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Julie.
You have a question for me?
I did. I was just wondering, um, when we start working towards college readiness and, um, we're talking about making a, a, either a degree program or a four-year degree program available, I hope that there's this planning or education towards how to manage college debt. It, it's not something that I want to deter anyone from pursuing it, but I think that it's really good to look, I, to look at the realistic, situation of when they graduate, how much debt they will have, how they can manage that debt. I don't think that we educated a certain generation of people well about that, especially first-time college bound kids from families. And I hope that I understand that some of the AP courses that meant, that we're only able to provide for Morse allow for some college credits. So if we can cut down the cost of, of student debt by cutting down how many credits they come in with, to maximize that as much as possible. But also really try to provide families and students the same kind of education and planning to what it will be like to sustain that debt after school.
So that's actually part of Melmac is making sure that students, students have to receive some sort of financial planning. We had planned for an EverFi, um, unit for all students in BRCTC, but all of our sending schools said that they do it on their own and that it would be not beneficial for our students to do it with us, because it is in the state requirements for all sophomores, I think, or all high school students to have personal finance as a graduation requirement, and it's in their history credits. And it's in the, it's, I know it's in our curriculum currently, so hopefully that's happening. Uh, there, but there are free resources, and so we can always look at that if students are feeling like they're not getting it. EverFi is a great, um, a great resource for schools to use to teach personal finance and have students, um.
I think it's a hard thing for students to know what they don't know, and families to be able to give that education to their children. Because we don't ever want to deter anyone from pursuing it. But I think we also have to realistically look at how they're going to be able to use these skills and traits to pay back this debt.
And the other thing is making sure that students go in knowing that they were career-minded when they enter college. But the other thing is to, that we make sure that all students, college might not be the right choice for them, and that you might want to go be, get your journeyman's electrician license by working for somebody and that, every, there's not one path. And that's what we're hoping to transpire. But if students have the core, the core academic and career skills to build on, then they can be successful no matter what. That's what we're working towards.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Okay, item nine point O, students. Sydney, hey, do you have anything you'd like to comment on? As, as Christmas approaches, how are things going in school?
Um, I think that the, uh, the school's been going really well. Um, I definitely think that, uh, we had a good time with the, um, winter festival, the music program that we had. I know that went off really well. Um, all of our classes are starting to prepare for the, for our fi- for our midterms. And so for some classes, the final. And I know that that's coming up pretty soon, but we're all just really excited for winter break, I think, teachers and students alike.
Well, that's honest. That's honest.
To add on to that, uh, winter sports started up relatively recently. I mean, that was within the first week of November break, getting back, or start, or I guess within the first week of school from November break. Um, I know a lot of students were happy about that. And then also auditions started for our one-acts play, which is in March. So I also know another group of students have something to look forward to or to work towards. So I feel like a majority of Morse is kind of, um, busy with something or like trying to get into an extracurricular right now.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Okay, item ten point O, superintendent's report.
Uh, just first thing is our BMS Lego Robotics team, first time they went to the state championship, and they tied for third place out of over forty teams, and they tied with South Portland. So, um, their first round of competition, they were okay, but their second round, they really improved and were really excited for their first time participating and competing. Uh, the flow reception, uh, some of you may have gone to that, but a great reception at, um, the Patent Free Library. And this year was all student-run, so Woolwich students and BMS students, uh, did the speaking, did a great job about growth mindset, about their artwork, and just being out, um, in the outdoors. Much of what you heard tonight from the outdoor classroom was echoed that evening by those students. And again, it's hard to believe it's our fifth year. Um, we've really grown that program, and it's really been a staple for, for us as a district. And then lastly, the board heard about this earlier, and I think it's been, um, in the papers as well. But proud to announce that Morse made the Advanced Placement, uh, honor roll. And this is the second time that we've made it in the last five years. And really, in simple terms, it's about, um, expanding advanced placement offerings to students at Morse, as well as keeping the, um, performance, improving the performance of, of those tests for the students that take those at the end of a year. So students that get a three or higher out of a five-point scale. So it's quite an honor. It's one of three hundred and seventy-three across the country and one out of three in the state of Maine. And that's all I have.
Any questions of Patrick? Nope. Deb, ten point two, financial report.
So we're back to the money. So tonight, we're looking at, uh, November, and out of our thirty million dollars for our budget at the end of November, we've spent nine point nine, so about a third. And as far as revenue, we've brought in about forty-two percent. So we've brought in twelve and a half million dollars in revenue. Um, once again, that's following the trend of how we usually spend and how the money usually comes in. In the month of December, you will see an encumbered amount on your report. I haven't run that, um, this year yet, only because I like to get through the month of November, because we've done half our stipends and... But it's a great tool just to watch salaries and benefits. So that will show up on your, um, December report. And finance news, basically Hank sent me electronic copy today of the audit and all the paperwork. And so that's complete, and he'll be at the finance meeting, um, January seventeenth. So if anybody has specifics, and I, I should have, um, hard copies tomorrow in the mail of audits. So, you know, let me know if you want copies and... Um, Tim said that he put a copy of a three-year look at his school lunch, um, account in your board packets. And there's always moving variables, so we have different, he looked at the month of October. So we have different, um, enrollments and that sort of thing, different number of days of service. But bottom line is, um, the trend is moving up. I think we're headed in the right direction. I think we're headed in the right direction. We, I definitely brought more revenue in, and expenses were a little bit higher, but if, you would think that anyways, because you're gonna be selling more lunches to bring more revenue in. But I think we're headed in the right direction with lunch, so he's doing a good job. And the last thing to let you know about is the Morse Project, and we have spent $7 million out of 75, so moving right along with that. And that's through the, the month of November. Final funding preparations are in order, and once the bids come in, then basically we'll look at final funding in the month of May. So hopefully I'll have enough cash to pay all the bills as they're coming through. But we will. And that's a timing thing, so. And that's it. Questions?
Any questions of, no, just before you leave, although I think it's as much a question for Patrick, too. I, I realize we, we haven't gone out to bid, so it's a, it's a hypothetical, but what are, what might Ron and State Ed be saying about costs of contracting these days? I mean, are they seeing higher costs than other projects that have gone to contract? Do you know?
Yeah, I think it's hard to predict. I think last year, there were some examples of higher costs because of the cost of steel and other things that are going on around the world. But I think we're, you know, we're the only project going out at this time, and so I think we're just hopeful that, you know, we'll come in within budget, and there's contingencies built in if not, but we're hopeful that, we hope for companies that are gonna be bidding. So hopefully we'll be competitive.
I guess they'll adjust the whole final budget after those bids come in, because they don't wanna bond more than-
Right.
-what we actually need, so.
Okay, thank you. I did, I did have a chance to talk to Tim a little bit in the middle of the week on, on this spreadsheet that he offered. And I asked him specifically about the food cost, which you see dropping precipitously. But he, he offered that, that that had to do in part because they, he found a bunch of food in freezers around the district. So it isn't necessarily a, a number that he expects to, to continue to come in below, you know, previous years, but, but there was a, a one-time bonus by being able to use some food that we had already expensed through other purchases. But I thanked him for this spreadsheet, and I agree with Deb. I think, I think on food service, we're going the right way. Right, Alan? Yep. Alan has a good feeling about that. That's good enough for me, so.
That's right.
Thanks. Item 11.0, old business. Jen, you wanna walk us through this?
Yeah, so we're just reflecting on, on how we're meeting our goals. And I think that the great presentation that we had tonight on ACES definitely helps us towards our goal number three. We're getting more feedback on that throughout the year and learning more about how we understand both ACES' impact on children and also how we support their resiliency. Towards goal number one, we continue to get updates on the Morse BRTC construction project. I think we're making great forward movement on that. And I did hear that we'll also have a conversation in the near future about meeting goal number four, which is further to, to get information on Schedule B positions.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, item 12.0, new business personnel?
Yeah, FYI, just retirement. Janet Crowe, who's our health teacher at Morse, I'd like to thank her for her service. She's been with us for seven years.
Retirement's at the end of the year?
Yes.
At the end of the school year?
Yep.
Thank you. 12.2, we, this is an action item. We have a overnight field trip request for a Morse, it says Morse students, but I think it's only one student. One student is gonna attend the Jazz All-State Festival in South Portland. And it is Sierra Wallace, who is in the choir. So do I have a motion? Motion by Bill. Second by Lou. All in favor of approval? Any opposed? No, thank you very much. 13.0, this is our second public session. And does anyone in the public wanna address the board about anything you'd care? No? No? We only have one member of the public here, but, no? Okay, thank you. 14. 14.0, next meeting date and location. We're scheduled to meet January 28th at Bath Middle School at 6 o'clock. Deb noted that the Finance Committee will meet January 17th to review the audit. And, and of course, all, all members are welcome to join in those finance discussions, so anyone who's free that day. No other business to come before us? Item 50.0, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Anita? Second? Second by Jen? All in favor? Any opposed? No? Okay, thank you very much. Hope everyone has a good holiday. Thanks.